Welcome to the 2016 Mamaronek School Board Candidates Forum, sponsored by the League of Women Voters of Larchmont and Mamaronek. My name is Alice Pernick, and I am co-president of our local league. Our mission is to encourage the informed and active participation of people in our government at all levels. The League of Women Voters is nonpartisan, and neither supports nor opposes any of the candidates. Tonight, we will be hearing from three candidates who are running for two open positions on the Mamaronek District School Board of Education. Viewers should also be aware that the ballot will include a vote on the proposed budget for the upcoming school year. Election Day this year will be on Tuesday, April 17th, at your local elementary school. Polls will be open from 6:00 a.m. until 9:00 p.m. For more information about the candidates and the proposed budget, please visit our website at l w v l m dot org. We are a small, local league that accomplishes a lot in addition to candidate forums. In the past year, the Larchmont-Mamaronek League has sponsored two local students to participate in the state league's Inside Albany program, sponsored a discussion about saving historic buildings in Larchmont and Mamaronek. We hosted speaking events featuring our elected officials, county legislator Catherine Parker and New York State Attorney General Eric Schneiderman. We've distributed voter registration forms. We provide the local portion of the Vote 411 Voters Guide. And we've sponsored a Women's History Month poster contest at the Homex Middle School. But in order for us to continue providing these services, we need your help for jobs both large and small. I invite anyone listening at home to become an active member of the League of Women Voters so we can continue the league's legacy in our community. Again, you can find us online at l w v l m dot org. Please join us. And now, I would like to introduce our host for this forum, Alice Bloom. Ms. Bloom is an attorney who worked at the law firms of Seward &amp; Kissel and Guggenheim and Untermeier. She lived in Mamaronek for 30 years and raised three children, who all attended the Mamaronek Schools and graduated from Mamaronek High School. She was a member of the League of Women Voters of Larchmont-Mamaronek and served as Voter Service Chair and President. She was the founder and facilitator of the Mamaronek League's Issues Breakfast for 12 years. Ms. Bloom has served on numerous boards and committees in the Mamaronek School District and in the Village of Mamaronek, including serving as a member of the Mamaronek Village Planning Board for 12 years. She produces and hosts the long-running LMC-TV Interview Program, A Town and Village Too, which features leaders in the arts, education, business, and public service, and also organizations that enhance the quality of life in our communities. A Town and Village Too is broadcast in Westchester and Manhattan, and it's viewable on YouTube. On behalf of the Larchmont-Mamaronek League of Women Voters, I'd like to thank her for hosting our discussion this evening. And now, it gives me great pleasure to turn this program over to Alice Bloom.
Thank you, Alice. As she said, I'm Alice Bloom, and I thank you for watching. It's my pleasure to be your host this evening. I'd like to welcome our candidates for school board, Sari Winter, Rena Beeter, and Michael Rosenbaum. Thank you so much for being here. As you all know, the election is on May 17th, when the community will be voting for school board members and be voting on the school budget. First, let me introduce you to our audience. Sari, I know that you are a high school English teacher, and that you taught in the Greenwich High School in Greenwich, Connecticut, and at LaGuardia High School in Manhattan. I know you have two children.
Three.
You have two in the Murray Avenue School, and a third entering Murray. Is that correct?
That is, yes.
Next fall, you've been active in the Murray Avenue PTA and served as co-chair of the Parent Association for Westchester Jewish Centers Early Childhood Center. Sari, I know you hold a master's in education from Teachers College, Columbia University, and a J.D. from Cardoza Law School. Welcome.
Thank you.
We have a lot of lawyers here today, as you will see. Rena Beeter, Rena, you are also running for board, for the board, and everybody here is running for the first time. Nobody is an incumbent. I know that you've served in various roles in the PTA for more than a decade, and you're a past co-president of the PTA, both at Mamaronek High School and at the Homex Middle School. You've served on various other committees and boards, and you have a son graduating from the high school this year.
I do.
Congratulations. I know that you also have a degree from Cardoza Law School and a master's in management and organizational studies from the University College Dublin Graduate School of Business. Welcome. Very impressive credentials for you both, as are Michael's. Michael Rosenbaum is also joining us after an extensive and diverse career in business. Michael also graduated from Yale and has a law degree from Columbia. You've served in many capacities in many business ventures, including Skybox, Vector, Protac, Lithotech, chairman of Gourmet Daily, and chairman of WTI Manufacturers Machinery, I believe. You're a member of the Mamaronek Art Council. You have four sons who've gone through the Mamaronek Schools, and you currently have a grandchild in the high school. Is that correct?
Yes, and I have a granddaughter in Hummox.
Very good.
And a third one is going to sneak into first grade.
Well, it'll be fun to hear what it's like from a different perspective, I'm sure. Again, thank you all for putting yourself forward. It is not a small task. So let's start. We've asked you not to do opening comments, because I think I have a pretty broad question to start with. You've each chosen to run for a position that offers no monetary compensation, is guaranteed to keep you away from family, friends, work, leisure time pursuits, a great deal of your week, possibly embroil you in controversies which will annoy your neighbors, possibly aggravate those closest to you, and a job that's not likely to be a stepping stone to fame and fortune. Why have you decided to run for this position? And what qualifications would you cite that would enable you to serve capably? And we're going to go in order, and I'll try to start each question with another one. So, Sari, why don't you try to take this one on first?
Sure. I decided to, because it seemed like a logical stepping stone for me in terms of just where I am in the community and my background. And I have always been very passionate about education. I went back to school, as you said, I went, after I practiced law, I went back to school at Teachers College at Columbia to get my master's degree, and I taught. And I loved it. I love teaching. And I love teaching at the different levels that I had an opportunity to teach, from sixth grade through 12th, and from remedial classes to honors and excelled classes. And I love the challenges that came with both. When we had children, I decided to step back and be with my children for a few years. And this, to me, seems like such a logical progression, that I can use my background in both the law and in education and as a parent to help our community. When my husband and I decided to move out of the city, we were looking for a warm community that, where we felt like we would be happy, our kids would have terrific opportunities. And it was an absolute deal breaker if the community didn't have excellent public schools, that we are both products of public school. And we, in fact, went to the same public school in New Jersey, and that was a priority. And we found it here. And so, to me, this seems like a really great way to continue my education, to, I have a very vested interest in the next many years of my children being in this district and beyond. And I think that I can continue to help this community and our educational system.
Thank you. And I think you have the youngest children, with the youngest one about to start, Murray.
Yes.
Okay, so that's one perspective. Rena, how about you?
Well, that was quite a description of what the Board of Ed actually entails.
Do you want to back out now?
No, you know what? I think I'm going into this with my eyes open. I've been to many board meetings over the years I've held, as you outlined in the introduction. I've been PTA president at Homex, been PTA president at the high school. I also served, excuse me, on PT Council, which, for those who don't know, is the body where PTA presidents from all of the schools gather, together with a couple of officers, president, treasurer of PT Council itself. And with PT Council, I was legislative co-chair, I was legislative co-chair, legislative liaison. I was the liaison to the Teacher Institute, and I also was the curriculum liaison. So I've had a very broad view of what is occurring in the district from different vantage points. And being on the Board of Ed, as Sari said, it's the logical next step for me. Having been involved and had my fingers in so many different areas of this district and worked with so many different members of the community, and I include teachers and administrators when I talk about community, because it really is our school community. And I just think this is a phenomenal district. I, too, as you outlined, am trained as an attorney, so I was able to use my legal training to review certain statutes, to review legislation when I was working as an attorney. I first started in private practice, and then I moved in New Jersey, and then I moved to New York, where I also did some legislative work with the State of New York Mortgage Agency. And it's always been an interest of mine. I follow education blogs. It's a bizarre hobby to read all this stuff, but it's somewhat of a hobby. And just to be able to see how education is delivered, how the district delivers education in this district, from the time my oldest, who just graduated college on Saturday, started to what's going on now in the schools, I think is very, very exciting. And I'm really looking forward to rolling my sleeves up and helping.
We'll be interested to hear you expand on that, because you have a good perspective on the changes that have happened in education over a period of time. Thank you very much. We're going to be talking about that a little more later. Michael, okay, you've got another perspective.
Well, she has a very broad perspective. I guess I have a long perspective, because my four children, four boys, all went to K through 12 in Mamaronek. And my two grandchildren, one is in the high school and one is in the Hummox, and the littlest one is going to creep into the first grade very shortly. And I've always thought that the really most important organization, governmental organization, was the schools. And I thought that my experience, both as a, I remember going through a lot of PTA meetings with my children, and now, more recently, I've attended some parent-teacher's meetings with my grandchildren, that it would be an opportunity for me to try and bring what knowledge and energy I have to the village school board. So I'm really looking forward to that. I do want, just as an aside, you said that the position was not paid.
There's no salary.
No, no, but I'm saying, I think the school board should reconsider that, because if I was offered money, I could decline it, but I have the luxury of doing that. I think there are a lot of people who do not have that luxury, and this policy basically excludes them.
Interesting. Yes, I think what we're all alluding to is a great deal of time that one must devote to this, and you have to be fortunate enough to have that time.
Right, or to say, I have to get half-time off my job for a year. How can I afford that, and so on and so forth? So I think that the board should reconsider their policy.
Well, we're going to get into budget later. I mean, and that might come up.
Well, that's a modest budget item. I mean, come on.
Well, what would you consider a reasonable amount of money to compensate a board member?
I would say $50,000.
Okay, so, and we have seven board members now?
Yeah.
Okay, that's not an insignificant amount of money.
No.
I don't think board members would object.
In a $100 million-plus budget.
Okay.
I mean, you're electing the people who are going to lead, hopefully.
Okay, very interesting. Thank you. Thank you very much. Okay. What would be your three top priorities as a member of the Mamaronek School Board? And of course, you may want to bring in budget, because paying for things does play a role in suggesting them. And Rena, we're going to start with you.
Well, I think, as you said, budget, very little of the school district budget is discretionary. So when you're talking about, I think it's 80% of the budget is in what would be considered fixed costs. Either they're contractual, or they're statutorily mandated. And with the 2% tax cap, which is not really 2%, this year, it's close to zero, since the budget, according to the tax cap calculations, and not to get too technical here, it's the lower of 2% or CPI.
Okay, well, let's say, let's put budget aside for a moment, and let's talk about your top three priorities. What are the three things that you think are most important that you'd like to work on as a new school board member? Maybe perpetuating an existing program or policy, or instituting a new one?
Thank you for that, because you can really get lost in the weeds when you're talking about budget and legislation.
We'll get to that a little bit more later.
But stepping away from that, I think one of the challenges is, we have a very diverse school district, and there are lots of different ways to deliver education. And I think that the district has been terrific in looking at the different ways to meet every child's need. And we have a lot of different learners in this district, and it's a diverse demographic. And I think that is going to be continuing challenges as we move forward, and one that I would very much like to be involved in the discussions, both with the superintendent and the administration, and with the community. I think it's very important to reach out to the community and get feedback from the community. So I would say that that encompasses a lot. It encompasses everything from what are considered high flyers, to children who are classified, to children who are considered to fall in the middle, whatever that means, it's a phrase that's sometimes used, to English language learners. And I think it's going to continue to be a challenge.
Okay, thank you. So the diversity is your main priority that you think needs to be addressed?
I think it's.
Or that you'd like to address if you were to be elected?
I think that's one of the priorities. I think that diversity encompasses a lot. There's a lot in that word, because diversity also means diversity in the type of learning styles that a child has. So it's a lot to, it's a lot to look at and a lot to achieve. And being on the Board of Ed really allows you to see it from multiple perspectives.
Okay, and your experience, do you think the district does address diversity?
Yes, absolutely.
Okay, but you'd like to work on that more. Okay, that's good.
I'd like to discuss it more. I think it's going to be, continue to be a challenge. I'm not saying that the district has not addressed it. I think they have. I just think going forward, that is going to be a, that's going to continue to be an issue that we're going to have to address.
Okay, thank you, Rena. Michael, how about you? If you had three, if you had the opportunity to name three priorities you'd like to work on, what would they be?
Well, I think, one, as to the budget, I think that the board has been reluctant to, and it hasn't been an issue this past year, but I think the board has been reluctant to challenge this cap. I mean, if, the worst that can happen is you need a vote of 60% on a subsequent round. And I think that if the board believes more money should be spent, you go to the, that's your budget, you go to the voters, and if you can convince them that it's worth it, that you'll get 60% plus. And I think if you step back, you've surrendered before you even started as to the budget. I do agree wholeheartedly with my colleague on the right. I think diversity is the biggest issue. And I think that we have to, we don't have to worry about the kids in Chatsworth, because they all come from very well-off backgrounds. But there are other elementary schools which the people are not as affluent, and I think that the school board has a duty, or more of a duty to them, because they, we know, for example, all the famous SAT scores, what they correlate with is just family income. You don't even have to take them. Tell them your family income, and they know where you're going to fall. So I think that the school board has addressed this issue, but I think they should really push on it and push on it hard.
Okay, do you have a third priority? You have an opportunity to identify it if you do.
No, I'll stick, I'll quit while I'm there.
Those are two pretty big priorities. Okay. Sari, how about you?
I would say first, you had mentioned continuity of excellent education. So to continue educating to the best of our ability, and along with that, and this goes to what both Mike and Rena said, our diverse student population. But it's not, when I think of diversity, I don't, I think of the kids who are in a low SES family, as well as kids who might need special services and might have special needs within the classroom and out. And along with that, in terms of the special education students, I think this is a real I feel strongly that students learn better when they're in an integrated environment, and that goes for all students, whether they need the extra help or whether they're at the top of the class. And my oldest student, my oldest, my oldest daughter, she's a student, though. My oldest daughter is in third grade at Murray, and she is in a co-talk class this year.
Tell us what that is.
A co-talk class is when there are two full-time teachers in the classroom. So there are children in that class with special needs, and they are integrated into the class. And it's not an assistant teacher, it's a second full-time teacher who addresses, and between the two of them, they address the needs of all the students in that class. My daughter's doing beautifully, and we're really proud of her, and she's doing, she's been doing wonderfully all through. I think this has been a very interesting year for her. I think that she has had a better opportunity than maybe she has in the past to see what different learners are like and what different children's needs are. And on the other end of the spectrum, I think that the kids that might need, have special needs, I think they benefit from being in this integrated environment, too. And along with that, I know that the district has worked really hard to keep students in district whenever possible, rather than, if their needs cannot be met within the district, we have to send them to an appropriate location where their needs can be met. If we can at all, if, when at all possible, if we can keep them in the district, it's cost-saving to the district, it's cheaper to do it here. And as I said, it's better for everyone. They get the benefit of, everyone gets the benefit of each other's experiences, which I think is really valuable. As far as the budget, that's another, obviously, huge item. The one thing that, I don't, this is.
Well, it plays together. Let me stop you there, because let me just elaborate on a budget issue. This year, actually, the budget comes in under the tax cap. And I'd really like to know more about how the district did that, as a smaller budget than ever before. I don't know if it's the first, but it's the first that I can recollect that the district has ever done, and I'm sure it took a lot of energy, where the budget this year came in, it's about $740,000 less than last year's budget. I'd like to know what changed and what they were able to do, because costs only go up. I don't think there's a decrease in population. But budget, of course, is very important. If you had to make cuts, it's a hard choice. If you had to make cuts, or had to make choices about programs, how would you do that? And what would you say could be let go? And what would you say has definitely got to stay? Michael, you want to start?
I don't think we should think in terms of cuts at all. I think we should think of terms, in terms of what the various children in the school district need, what support the teachers and administrators need, and if it costs more, it costs more. I mean, the teachers have a contract, and they're entitled to make money under their contract, and they're entitled to make more money, I believe, as the contract goes on. I was just reading that any contract with teachers where they reward or don't reward teachers seems counterproductive, so I'm glad we don't have that in this district. Reward them if their kids do better on these tests. And I think that we spend money in the budget and devote time, which is money, on a lot of tests, and I think that that is just a complete waste. And I would be in favor, if I'm on the board, to cut these tests and teaching to the test down to zero if possible, or as low as possible.
Michael, I want to back up. We're going to talk about standardized tests in a minute, but right now, we're talking about budgets.
Well, budgets.
And how we, what we'd cut if we had to, and you believe not to cut. Let me follow up with you.
Please.
Because I think you have a very positive attitude about the schools, and a lot of energy needs to be put into our kids, and I think everybody here feels the same way about that. How would you, how do you think programs should be evaluated? People come up with great ideas, and sometimes programs are implemented, and they cost money. How do you think we should evaluate whether a program is working and whether it's worth the money?
It's very, very hard to evaluate programs. And then, do you evaluate them, what the kids do next year, in five years and 10 years? And I think that the evaluations have, I just read the book by Diana Ravitch, are basically useless. They don't tell you anything about that you care to know.
So how, as a school board member, when people come with great ideas or programs they'd like to see, how would you prioritize them? And how would you embrace everything that comes before you? Or how would you prioritize what programs to fund and whatnot?
I think you have to, as any board member, you have to look at the pros and cons and what you think are the relative strengths of the program. But I would not rely on data, that this teacher, or this group of teachers did X and this group of teachers did Y, or in different elementary schools, they're going to do differently because of the socioeconomic pattern of their.
So do you think there should be no assessment of the value of a program?
I think most assessments do not really lead to anything. All of the assessments that are used and are tried in different school districts around the country have been very inconclusive, except one. And that one was very clear. Increase the physical space to accommodate people and decrease the amount of kids in a class. That really stands out as a benchmark. Everything else, you might as well just flip coins. Probably cheaper to flip coins.
Thank you. Rena, would you like to address this, the issue of, I'm sorry, Rena, I meant Sari. I'm going to go back to Sari and then Rena. The issue of budgets and how you would prioritize with a budget constraint in mind?
I would, I would think I would take a different approach than Mike. We do have, we have real budgetary constraints. And I don't think, this year, we had a big bond vote for, to renovate the gym and locker room at the high school. And we really, everyone really got out there to vote for this. It was a necessary upgrade for the school, and the community understood that. And people came out, and they voted for this, and the bond went through, and it was funded. And it was a real victory for, again, for the continuity of our education and the continuity of the upkeep of our facilities, which is important. I don't think you can go to our community in such close proximity and say, "We really need the money for this, for this one project," which we did, I believe we did. And then, six months later, come back and say, "We haven't really been able to stay within our budget, and we need to go beyond this tax cap." And I think it's, it's not to say that we might not have to ever. The Board of Ed currently has talked about how, in the future, look, we might have to if all else fails. But there are challenges to doing that. And first of all, A, you do have to get 60% of the vote to have this, to go beyond the tax cap. But if you don't get that 60%, and the community says, "You know what? We pay enough taxes, we have enough money, the budget has all this money, you should be able to figure it out," then you get nothing. And then you're back to square one. And as Rena had said earlier, so many of our costs, 80% or so, are fixed. Our wiggle room is minuscule. So when you're talking about whether it's funding, paying the Board of Ed members, or funding a program, the co-op camp was on the chopping block this year, and that was a $160,000 program. And to me, that is a real. And to me, that is a real, that's a program that serves so much, there's so much value in that program. And again, the continuity of education and, you know, avoiding a downwards, you know, the slippery, the like, you know...
Summer slide.
Summer slide, thank you, the summer slide. And, you know, so a program like that, $160,000, it's, you know, millions of dollars in this budget, but that program almost got cut.
Okay.
I thought the board didn't embrace it completely.
There was, I think it was budgetary constraints, but they, you know what, the point is that it's $160,000, that I believe that's a program that we should absolutely be keeping.
Explain to our viewers the co-op program.
The co-op program is a program that primarily is, tends to be children at MAS. It serves about a third of the MAS population.
MAS being?
Amerenick Avenue School, the elementary school. And that program has a dual benefit of providing a summer camp atmosphere for those kids, as well as having an academic, an academic component to it. And, Michael, Rena, help me out with it. The goal is to provide them with a place to be that is both fun to be at and provides a camp atmosphere and academic. And a lot of those children, many of them, if not all, are in lower socioeconomic families, where a camp opportunity, a summer, you know, a school-based program wouldn't be possible otherwise.
Okay, so that was on the chopping block, but it was salvaged?
It was, but there's outside funding needed too. So this is being kind of piecemealed together.
It was piecemealed before they got a grant from a private citizen. But I think the, I personally think the Board of Education, it's disgraceful that they didn't fund it fully and supportively. And if I'm on the board, I certainly would not just sit there and roll my eyes as they do that.
Okay, well, do you think it might have been a strategy, that thinking that private funding would come forward, they could easily not fund it, but know that it wouldn't die?
Well, I think that's an abdication of responsibility to begin with. And secondly, they didn't know.
We don't know that that was the strategy.
I don't think it was. It was like a miracle when she gave money.
Okay, okay. Rena, why don't you get on this?
No, I don't think it was a strategy. I think that there are, you started off the question by saying that they're going to have to, that, how would you handle budgetary cuts? I think that as a board member, you're in a really tough position, because there are a lot of things that you feel you should do and want to do. The question is, can you, given the budget constraints? And, excuse me, as Sari said, you have, you need a 60% supermajority if you are going to override, if you're going to go above the tax cap. And eventually, we are going to have to do that. I have no idea how the board has been able to, and how Dr. Shapps has been, year after year, been able to bring our budget down way under the tax cap. And what you want to take a look at, or what I would want to take a look at, and I think the board is currently doing this, is you want to look at what areas will not affect a child's educational experience in this district. And that's what you want to preserve. Unfortunately, there are only so many times that you can cut the budget for paper or pencils. You know, once it's cut, it's cut. And as Mike said, you want to be sure that your teachers are supported both financially and with professional development. I think the district has done a very good job of moving professional development in-house, which certainly cuts down the costs. It's, you know, embedded professional development, I think is what the term would be. So it's not like these one-shots, where you go off campus and learn something. It's really being brought into, into the classroom, and teachers teaching one another. But I think it is, it's a challenge. It's a challenge because this community has many different constituencies. And one of those constituencies is one that we all belong to, which is, we're all taxpayers. And I know many people who've decided to sell their homes and move out of the community or move to smaller homes, because the taxes are very, very high. And that's something, the Board of Ed is the stewards of the education of our children, and also the financial stewards. And it's a very tough balancing act.
Certainly. Well, I think, I think our constituents, our taxpayers in the community, do appreciate what hard decisions the school board has to make. If only we got credit for coming in under the tax cap so many years, that enabled the district to exceed the tax cap at other times without penalty. I don't know, I don't believe there is...
Originally, with the way the legislation was supposed to work, and cut me off because I can be a little bit of a policy nerd with this, is that originally, the governor had said, "If you stay under the tax cap, you could roll over the funds that you didn't use and use them the following year."
That does not happen.
And that, well, not only has it not happened, but the way the formula was structured, it's an impossibility. First of all, to sit down, to sit down and try to understand the convoluted nature of the calculation is...
It's hard. But to answer, to answer my question, we can't roll over. So we don't get the benefit of...
No, the formulas and all, no.
Okay. I appreciate the complexity there. You brought up the question of standardized testing, so let's go to a question about that. And Sari, we're going to start with you this time. As you've all pointed out, this is a very diverse district. How do we achieve a proper balance between the demands of standardized testing and the opportunities for authentic learning? A lot of that standardized testing is mandated, as I understand it.
When I think back to standardized tests when I was a kid, I, there was no prep. You learned what you were learning through the year, and then, one day, the teacher told you, "Tomorrow, you have to bring a number-two pencil, you have to eat a good breakfast, and we're having a test, and that's what's happening tomorrow. It's a different agenda tomorrow." I think at some point, we did get away from that, but I do feel that this year, seeing my kids in the district, and seeing my third grader, who was the first, she's my first to have gone through the standardized test this year in my family, and it was very similar. I was really happy to see that she was not stressed out about it, she wasn't worried about it. It was a similar, we got a note home saying, "There's going to be a test next week, it's going to be Tuesday, Wednesday, Thursday, and for these hours, and make sure they get a good night's sleep, make sure they eat a good breakfast." And she didn't think about it much beyond that. And I know that that's not the experience of every child. Some children definitely do get more preoccupied with them than others. But I think her teachers did a beautiful job of not focusing on it. They, you know, the curriculum certainly has changed, Common Core has changed, the math curriculum has changed, curriculum in many different ways. But I didn't feel that they were teaching to a test. And I do feel like that doesn't, it doesn't make sense to teach to a test. And as far as assessing a teacher based on these tests, when I was teaching, I taught a ninth-grade remedial class in Greenwich, and I taught a 12th-grade honors class. The ninth-grade kids, I had children in that class that were classified. I had them sent out because they didn't seem to know how to read, and they were classified as remedial readers. My, that's like a kindergartner is a remedial reader, it's an emerging reader, I'm sorry. They were classified as emerging readers. It's like a kindergartner, a first grader.
And they were really in what grade?
Ninth grade. My seniors were applying to the Ivies. If I, as one teacher, were assessed based on my freshmen, and then assessed based on my seniors, I would get wildly different scores. I put the same heart into both classes, I put the same dedication, the same education on my part, the same passion, but it would look like two different teachers were teaching it. It's not for, you know, lack of trying, but they were coming from different places, they had different challenges, and, you know, the testing would have reflected that.
So your experience in this district regarding standardized tests, based on your experience, and your oldest is a third grader. Okay, we're going to turn to Rena now, whose children are a little older. Does that kind of taken-in-stride attitude about standardized tests persist throughout the higher grades?
It does. The only place I'd say it doesn't is when you're talking about standardized tests for college admission. That's when the children seem to be, and my own children, seem to be more stressed than they were about, say, the Regents exam or an AP exam, or when they were in elementary school, the ELAs, which is the English, English language test, or the math tests. So my children weren't stressed about those at all. Sometimes I wanted them to be a little bit more stressed about them, but, but the teachers, again, were also very good at saying that same thing, get a good night's sleep, have a good breakfast, and, you know, come in and...
So you feel this district really keeps the standardized tests in perspective, but yet a lot of time is allotted to standardized tests? So how, how do you balance that? Because that time is taken away from...
Learning.
Learning.
Well, relative to the instructional, relative to the, if it was a pie chart, and relative to the other instructional time in the class, would I prefer not to see standardized testing in the classroom? I would prefer to see maybe a little bit less standardized testing in the classroom. But I think in terms of the overall picture of what our children are getting in the classroom, I don't think it takes up a huge or percentage that negatively impacts their education in this district.
Okay, now, Sari also brought up the subject of teacher evaluation based on standardized tests. Do you concur with her that that should be completely dismissed? That teachers should not be evaluated based on how their students do on standardized tests?
Well, I don't think that, Sari was saying it should be completely dismissed.
I mean, I think that you can, I think you can watch, like, see a trajectory. So if you see that, if you are looking at my class of remedial ninth graders versus every other ninth-grade remedial English teacher, I understand that you could maybe draw a correlation, you could figure out, but I, I think that there's a lot that goes into it. I think that it can be used, just to clarify, I didn't mean to cut you off, I'm sorry, just to clarify.
No, it's totally fine.
But just to, that I think you can use it in part, but the bigger evaluation, I think, for teachers is, when I was teaching, and the headmaster pops hen, pops his head in my door, and, you know, just checks to see what's going on, and literally sits in on my class and maybe even raises his hand, which he did. You know, so, you know, I think that the administrators being hands-on and knowing their teachers and knowing what's going on in their classrooms, I think is a better indicator. I think the test can be used in small part, but really in small part and understanding the limitations.
Okay, with a nuanced use of...
Yes, yes, yes.
Right. And that's where, that's where I was going in terms of what Sari was saying, that it depends how much emphasis you put on those test results. And in this district currently, they don't put, their teachers are not evaluated just based on the test results. They have mini observations where administrators go into the classroom and they see what's going on with the teachers. I also would love, having spent a fair amount of time with high school students, I would love for there to be a mechanism where high school students are asked to give feedback about their teachers and about their educational experience at the high school. They have a lot to say, and they're a very thoughtful group of kids.
Okay, thank you. I think that's a great idea, too. Mike?
Well, I mean, I think everyone who goes to high school or elementary school, middle school for that matter, everyone knows who the good teachers are and who the bad teachers are. I really think so. I don't think it's a mystery. And I think that we should obviously minimize teaching to the test. We should not have these standards applied to teachers. The superintendent hires principals, and he is the one, in my opinion, who should be in charge and saying, you know, "This teacher is great, I don't know what he can do for her financially, I don't think he can do hardly anything." But if he thinks that a teacher is not up to it, he should make every effort to get rid of the teacher.
So it's the principal's job to do the evaluation?
He's there, that's his job. And he should do it, in my opinion.
Okay, and as far as standardized tests, I mean, do you feel...
I think they should be minimized to the greatest extent possible. They are a waste of money and time.
Okay. I think you're pretty clear on that one.
Yes, I am.
Okay, now, you brought up the superintendent. A big job and a very important job in this district. What do you feel is the superintendent's most important mission? And how do you think the school board should hold the superintendent accountable for achieving that mission? And you can bring into this, how does a board work with a superintendent? And how does a community work with a superintendent? Very important job, and the person is quite prominent in our community. Rena, we're going to let you start with that one.
I think it's really the job of the superintendent to set the educational priorities of the district, and to lay out a vision of what they see from the time they, they entered the district to, and a trajectory to where they would like the district to be. And it's a, it's an ongoing, that's an ongoing process. But I think that that is a very important, and for me, the most important piece of the superintendent's job. The vision, being able to communicate that vision and being able to implement that vision.
Okay. Just to follow up, I would assume that when the superintendent is hired, and that's a long process here, and probably there's lots and lots of interviews and meetings with the board, that kind of mission and his philosophy of education is carefully dissected. What happens if, how would you hold that person accountable for achieving that mission? The superintendent is hired, and the board has signed on that, that mission is consistent with the mission of our school district. How is, how is that person's work evaluated?
I think in part, it's evaluated by speaking with board members, reaching out to the community, having input from administrators and principals. I think you, there is also, you have to have data, you have, there has to be some data, some way to measure the success of the, of the school district. We can all debate about the best way to measure the success of a school district, but you need both qualitative and quantitative data. So you can take a look, there's a district dashboard, which lists data of the, of test scores, of how many students are at grade level, above grade level. And I think you do, you need to take a look at it.
So we're, we have a little different attitude than about evaluating teachers. In this instance, we do want statistical analysis to help evaluate the performance of the superintendent. Is that what, do I understand that correctly?
I think that it's, it's a part of what you look at. What is the superintendent say they want to achieve? The board also has a discussion with the superintendent, and they have board, they have a board meeting every year to discuss what the district's goals are, what are the district's priorities. And that is a conversation that's, that's had together with the superintendent and the head of curriculum and the superintendent in charge of curriculum. And I think that you need to take a look, take a snapshot, where are you at the beginning of the year? Where are you at the end of the year? And I think you need anecdotal data. I think you need to have principals coming in, you need to have teachers coming in and saying, "This is what's going." When I say coming in, coming to board meetings or to community conversations, and saying, "This is where we are, this is what we achieved, this is still what we would like to achieve," similar to a report card a child gets.
Sure. Now, I'm adding, I'm adding something to this question, which you all get to address, and that is, if, if school board members find that the superintendent's vision or mission seems to diverge with that of the district, do you feel that you, as a school board member, would have the strength to suggest an alternative?
Absolute, an alternative policy or approach?
You know, getting rid of him? What are you saying in English?
Yes, to suggest a change of leadership.
Well, I think before you get to that point, I think there, I think, having seen some board meetings, there's definitely a give and take, and there's definitely some questioning. I think you get much better decision-making if people sit around, if they explore the alternatives, if they make their views known. I think that the board isn't in place just to be, you know, yes, men and women to the superintendent. I think that, as I said earlier, you have really good decision-making when people are sitting around and questioning one another.
So the board needs to be active in doing that. And I make no aspersions at all about our current superintendent. This is a general question, not directed at a person in power today, or employed by the district today. But what I'm getting at is, as a school board member, would you have the strength and the confidence to say at some point, "We don't seem to be agreeing on where we're going here, and maybe we need to make some changes?" It's a tough, tough decision, but this is the person who is employed to direct the ship.
Well, there also, as a Board of Ed member, you're really responsible to act as two-way communicator between the community and the superintendent. So I think that you are obligated, as a Board of Ed member, to convey what you're hearing in the community to the superintendent and, you know, bring that to Board of Ed meetings.
Okay, I'm going to give you a rest, I've really put you on the hot seat.
I'll take a drink of water now.
That's all we have. That's all we have for you today. Michael, you're next. I've put you on the hot seat here.
Please.
All right, so how would you address the superintendent and, you know, how you evaluate or hold the superintendent accountable for achieving the mission that he and the board have set?
I, I think it's, it's very difficult. I mean, obviously, the board should have a lot of conversations and meetings with the superintendent, as well as other interested parties, PTA, parents' meeting, and so forth. But it's very hard to rely on data. I mean, when you said, well, you can have anecdotal data, you know what that's called? That's not data. That's just one-off, you know, stuff. And, and I think it's, as I said, I, I think data is very, very difficult to combine, that stands up to any scrutiny. And maybe my colleagues can give me examples to the contrary, but everything I've either read or heard from my own children and grandchildren, it doesn't seem to make any sense.
So how would you, if you were on the board, how would you evaluate the performance of a superintendent?
I think you just have to talk with him or her. He's obviously initially stated what the mission is. You then would ask them, well, how much have you achieved of your mission? And of course, everyone is going to be somewhat self-serving. And then I think as almost arbitrators, we have to decide, is, is this person, we approved his mission, are we approving what he's doing, and do we believe what he said is his mission? And as I've said previously, I don't think we know how things are going to turn out for, for years.
Well, I think that's right. But earlier, you said that it's really almost impossible to evaluate the performance of a program.
Right.
And assessment is rather hard.
And then it's hard to evaluate the superintendent.
Right, but.
And, and the, the superintendent, of course, has the, in my opinion, the obligation of evaluating the principals in each school, and for that matter, the assistant principals, because they all report to him. I mean, in the business, we're like board of directors, and people say, well, Mike, we're going to make this much money and have that much sales, and so on and so forth. And then we have a discussion later to see what happened. Now, here, it's much harder than in business because you can't rely on numbers. Or if you rely on numbers, you might as well be.
But you do think the board has a role in evaluating the performance of a superintendent?
Of course.
Okay.
We hire them. We maintain them. I mean, it would be drastic and dramatic, and, you know, unless somebody molests a child in front of 33 people, you're not going to fire anybody. Come on.
So you're saying, what, that we are going to be rather relaxed in evaluating the performance of a superintendent?
I'm saying, I don't think we have good, good tools to do it.
How did you do it in business? Was it more statistically based?
Well, if you, if someone said, Mike, we're going to sell 100 of these units, and we're going to make X dollars, you come by back in three months, six months, or a year, and you say, hey, Joe, you told us this, and look what happened.
Okay. But we can't quite do it that way in education.
We can't do it at all.
Okay.
Not quite. I'd say almost not at all.
Okay. All right, Sari, you get, you get the hot seat now. I've grilled everybody else intensively.
I do agree that this is a more subjective task. I mean, there's, there, you know, to the extent that we have data in terms of what programs maybe were initiated at the beginning of the year, and what has worked and what hasn't, I, there's, there might not be, there's not so much quantitative data to look at. That said, I, I do think that the, to Rena's point, I think that the anecdotal evidence, I think, is important. And I think that, you know, as, as you mentioned, I know, I have three kids, I'll have three kids all at Murray next year. If I were to run two terms on the Board of Ed, I would see my kids from the elementary school through the high school. And you have eyes and ears to the ground when you're there. When you're at drop-off and pickup, even if it's not all the time, but if you're seeing what's happening, you know, talking to your friends, talking to your children.
Sure. So you're saying anecdotal information is very relevant. But on this specific question about evaluating a mission of the superintendent, whether the superintendent is achieving the mission that was set by the board and the superintendent, what role do you, would you play as a school board member? Again, I know you're at Murray Avenue a lot.
Well, as, as a school board member, I think you have to have a broader vision than just one elementary school. You need to be there and, you know, be talking to many people. And actually, I had coffee with Nancy, who's the outgoing, one of our outgoing Board of Ed members. And, and one thing that she said was, she said, you have to be prepared, if you're going to do this, to be stopped in the supermarket, to, you're walking down the street and be stopped at Bradley's, and to be asked questions about things that are going on. And I think as a board member, you need to be open to those conversations and hearing how your community is feeling. As a board member, you would, I, I would also feel comfortable not only listening and hearing what the superintendent has to say and, you know, what data he or she believes shows, you know, that this vision is being accomplished, but I wouldn't be afraid to be the squeaky wheel and to, you know, to question whether that's the case. And I think that the board, I think, has, I think it's critical to not, you know, to not be that rubber stamp, to be listening and actively engaged in this process and, you know, and to take everything into consideration.
Okay. All right, I've grilled you all pretty well. I have more questions, but we don't have more time. So unfortunately, I'm going to give you the opportunity to close. I have more questions, and I'll have the benefit of a little bit of your time afterwards. Sadly, our community will have to meet you in the supermarkets and at other forums throughout the community. So why don't we proceed in the opposite order? And Michael, I'll give you the opportunity to start, and I'm sure you have a few closing remarks.
Yeah. I, I think that the, the present board has lacked leadership and backbone. And I can just give one example that comes to mind. There's been a discussion about the Open Door. You, you understand what that.
Explain to our community what that is.
The Open Door is a not-for-profit, non-charging health organization that has numerous activities in Westchester, and they offered to come to the Marneque, go into one of the elementary schools, where they would provide at no cost to the board or to the community, health services. And when they've done this in other communities in Westchester, they've cut down on sick days of kids and so on, which is obviously a plus. And the present board, and I remember, and that, this is what's motivated me to run, really. I was talking to a present board member, and I said to this member, I said, well, what do you think about this open door? And the member said, well, you know, there are people on both sides of the issue.
Okay.
And I said, well, that's why you have a Board of Education, that's why you should be leaders.
Okay, so you think.
Instead of, and what they've done, it's basically now, is to kick the can down the road for another year.
I see. So they, the district decided not to invite Open Door in?
No, they're quote-studying it.
I see.
For another year.
Okay.
And I think that just shows, that's just one example, but I think quite a public and telling one of their lack of vision and their lack of backbone.
Thank you. Thank you. Rena? Any closing remarks?
I just think this is a very exciting time to be in education. I think that things are changing so quickly. I think that you have, with technology, things have changed. You now have children in school utilizing iPads, you have to, but you still want to have teachers being able to teach in the way that, in the way that they do best. It's all about, it's really all about the teacher and the teacher, and the teaching in the classroom. I think that some of the experim, experiential, excuse me, experiences our kids are having, since my experience really is at the high school level and not at the elementary. I, I have to say, I wish I had another child who could go through the elementary schools because things have really changed so much.
Be careful what you wish for.
Where you could find yourself back there one day, as Michael is.
But, but, you know, from kids going, as you know, going up to New Hampshire, kids in journalism class, writing stories. But, you know, I think that it's also a very challenging time, both, as I said, from a diversity standpoint, from a budgetary standpoint, and I like a good challenge.
Okay, well, you'd get one on the school board, that's for sure. Okay, in the minute we have left, Sari.
I am so excited for hopefully the opportunity to be on the Board of Education. I think that, you know, my background as a lawyer, as an educator, as a parent, all are important pieces to my personal puzzle. And I think that I would do a great job in critically thinking and questioning what's going on. To the technology point, I think that it's so interesting to see, you know, six years ago, iPads were just coming out, and now we're looking at it. It was just six years ago, it's a flash in the pan. And now we're talking about the necessities of having different tools in the classroom, and it's just changing lightning speed.
Well, I feel the excitement that you are imparting about the possibility on the school board. I want to thank you all for being here tonight and for sharing your thoughts.
Thank you for inviting us.
Thank you very much.
It really has been my pleasure. And whoever, I know two of you will be elected. I hope that whoever the third is will remain involved, and it's too much valuable talent to lose. So thank you again for putting yourself forward and for being here tonight. I'm Alice Bloom. I want to thank you for watching. Remember to vote on May 17. We'll see you next time.
Great.